Good evening and welcome to the September 12th, 2024, meeting of the Yorktown Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is John Meisterich. I chair the board, as of recently, taking over for Gordon Fine. With me tonight are Anthony Altamare, our newest member who filled my seat, Bill Gregory, Tony Tripodi, Bob Fahey, our counsel, Christine Jaeger, uh, Jaeger.
Kager.
Kager, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And Mizreen, our assistant from the Building Department. So our first order of business in this meeting is to approve the minutes from last meeting. I sent them out. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes.
Any comments or concerns?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve the July meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. The next thing that we need to do is set up next meeting. So if you're here for the first time, we call that new business. You're generally going to be here tonight and then come back for a hearing. So the next meeting, these dates are up on the board here. They're, the meeting itself is October 24th, here at six, uh, here in the boardroom at 6:30. We will do some site visits on October 19th as a board. So if we set your hearing down for a site visit, we will be coming on Saturday morning. We generally start around 9:30 in the southern portion of town and work our way north. Another thing that you will need to do for your new hearing is send out mailings. So it's very important to abide by the dates for the mailings between September 3rd and October 9th. If you don't hit those dates, we can't open the hearing.
30th.
It's 30th.
30th.
Oh, September 30th to October 9th.
Do you need my glasses?
Did I misspeak? I'm sorry. Very, the dates are so important that I mispronounced and misspoke them. So you send those on, with the white receipts, a certificate of mailing from the post office. So our assistant here, Mizreen, can really help you with all the details. But basically, you'll be putting a sign on your property. You'll produce a picture of the sign and an affidavit for the sign, a certificate of mailing for each of the neighbors. You get the neighbors from the tax assessor's office and then a copy of what you sent to the, to the neighbors, the, the notice. So we will move on to the new business part of our agenda. First is HATE. Is anyone here on that? Okay. Basically, we're going to set, that's a renewal for an accessory apartment. So what we do is handle that administratively. We'll refer to the Building Department for a visit and have the hearing next, uh, next month on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you've just heard about the dates and all that. All right, thank you. O'Neil.
Same thing. Renewal.
It's a renewal for an accessory, very similar to the last one. So we will handle that administratively again. I'll refer to the Building Department for a visit. And set it up for a public hearing on, on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gazola. Anyone here on that?
That's a sigh.
Okay, this is an application for a special use permit to allow a chicken coop that requires a special use permit as per section 300-81 of the Yorktown Zoning Code. So no one's here on that. I would advise the applicant to review the town code and come up with a plan that complies. But I will refer it now to the Building Department and I'll set it down for a site visit on October 19th and a public hearing on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Nakala. That's also a renewal for an accessory apartment at 2717 Quinlan Street. We will handle that administratively. I'll refer to the Building Department and set it down for a public hearing on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Boot, Booty?
Body.
Body.
Yeah.
Um, are you here on that application? No. So basically, that's another renewal for an accessory apartment at 3214 Quinlan Street. We handle those administratively. I'll refer to the Building Department to pay a visit and set it down for a public hearing on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Urban. E-R-B-E-N, Urban. This is 914 Barberry Street. This is an application to construct an addition and a covered front porch with a front yard setback of 37 feet where 40 is required per section 321 of the Town Zoning Code. So I'll refer this to the Building Department. I'll set this down for a site visit on October 19th and set it for a public hearing on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Lefkowitz. So you can come to, either way, it's fine. We're, um, this one's a little more complex and there's two of them, so why don't you?
Okay.
In case we have a question. There's two applications for Lefkowitz, 2057 La Boye Court. The first is an application to construct an addition to create an accessory apartment that will require a side yard variance as follows. One side yard of eight feet where 15 is required and combined side yard of 26.8 where 40 feet is required per section 300-21 of the Town Zoning Code. So I will refer that to a building?
Before you do that, what is the, what is the nature of the, of the, what, what's the nature of the addition? Is this for the accessory apartment?
Yes.
Gotcha, alright.
So I will refer that to the Building Department. I'll set that down for a site visit. It'd be good if you were like available for, for any of that, or at least mark the property. Where the, you know, where the, um.
Be there.
Yeah. And set it down for a public hearing on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
We have one more. We're actually, your applications, I guess, are separated. So once we have, you know, we have the application for the addition itself and then an application for a special permit for the accessory apartment that goes inside the addition. So it's like two separate orders of business. So this application is to create a new accessory apartment that requires a special permit for six, uh, 300-38 of the zoning code. So I will refer that to the Building Department. Again, we have a site visit already and set that for a public hearing on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's similar to what we just had. That's 3675 Curry Street. This is an application to construct an accessory apartment that will require a side yard variance of 12.95 feet where 15 is required per section 300-21 of the Town Zoning Code. So I will refer this to the Building Department, set it down for a site visit on October 19th and a public hearing on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Velucci, number two, is same address, 3675 Curry Street. This is an application to create a new accessory apartment that requires a special use permit per section 338 of the zoning code. I'll refer this to the Building Department, same site visit, and set it down for a public hearing on October 24th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's new business for next month's meeting. So we're now at the adjourned agenda, agenda. These are hearings that were started in the past and were adjourned. So anyone from Damiano? So this has been adjourned for a bit of time and we'll just continue to adjourn that. If someone's here. Okay, Summit Street. This has also been adjourned for a while, so we'll just continue with the adjournment. Satio?
I'm Cunha here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if I should sit down or come up.
Well, I didn't realize you were gonna be here.
Well, you're, you're here.
Yeah. Good evening.
So good evening. We've opened this a while back, so why don't you remind us of what?
So I have a property on Summit Street that I was proposing to put a two-family dwelling on. And during the application process, I think it was Mr. Gordon Fine found the deed from about 60 years ago that said that the lot, which was at one point joined with the lot next door, on the deed it said that you couldn't build a building, only accessory building, a garage. So I just need an extension to get an attorney to argue the deed.
Okay, so we'll just keep this adjourned.
Yeah.
And you're in the process of doing it now?
I am, yes.
Alright. That's fine.
Thank you so much.
I will make a motion to adjourn, uh, this, this application.
We haven't opened it. This one was never opened.
It's never opened? Okay. Yeah, it's never opened.
Alright, so we'll, 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 we'll leave it at this.
Okay, Satio. I have a note that this is, notice is not sent, so we, did we ever?
Do the mailers, so they're gonna do it next month.
So we didn't open this one either then?
No.
Okay, 76 Route 6 Holdings, Inc.
Should we do the other three first?
As per the zoning board's interpretation that residential districts outside of Yorktown must be considered under section 300-97A to determine proper setback, the applicant must request a variance for construction of a new building with a 101-foot setback from a residential district that requires 200 feet as per section 300-97 and 300-21 of the Town Zoning Code. So can you state your name for the record?
Mr. Chairman or Mr., new Mr. Chairman, good to see you. David Cooper, partner with the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz. Here representing ATRAC Recycling Center, the owner of the subject parcel. This is an 18-acre parcel along Route 6 in the town's I-1 district. The applicant is pursuing a application, a site plan application before the planning board to develop the property with a recycling center. As, as you just said, Mr. Chairman, it has been opined by this board that a 200-foot setback applies. The proposed building is 100, would need 101-foot setback variance if it were in its current location. We were before, and with me tonight is my colleague, Jack, Jackon Cohen, who I think you met at the last meeting, along with my partner, David Steinmetz, because I was, I was away in July. The applicant at the last meeting did go through the record, go through the, the factors, et cetera. He did open up a public hearing, I believe he took statements as well. Since that time, we have anything, anything further to, to submit. We believe we would rest on the record that the, shows that the, the potential detriment with respect to this setback would be far outweighed by the benefit of allowing the building up on the hill, as we say, rather than as of right below. Based on that, we don't have anything further other than to ask the board to, to vote tonight on the request.
Okay. What is the application with the planning board?
The, the, we are processing the site plan application. We, we have submitted material back in June and then July, but the planning board has not put us on the agenda since.
So, has this been reported? I don't, I don't think we're in a position to be able to make any decisions without the planning board's information.
Well, the planning board hasn't, hasn't, well, let me, let me just make the record. I understand, I understand what you're saying. I'm not arguing, I need to make my record, obviously. We, we made a request back in July to appear before the planning board. The planning board took us off the agenda and, and this application hasn't been on the agenda since. I know your board asked the planning board for an opinion with respect to whether it should be, it's, whether they would prefer it up on the hill, up on the top of the hill, which would require this variance, or as of right below, which would be closer to 9W. It's been two months and they, they haven't responded. And so we respectfully state that the record is complete and just because of the, the planning board, you've asked for a recommendation, they haven't given it to you, we can't be held, you know, sort of with our, our hands behind our back and not move it forward.
So going through the memos here in the file, just to kind of reiterate what you stated, we did have a memo from planning last month, but it basically said we don't have enough information to provide recommendations, so to speak. Our normal process is, on a complicated, you know, project like this, the planning board and the applicant would negotiate most of the parameters of the, the project, the site, the sighting, you know, and the planning board takes into account many, many factors. And at that point in time, they normally issue a memo to us recommending a variance because, you know, the negotiated plan is superior to a plan that doesn't require a variance. Now, last month, you know, your colleague and Mr. Steinmetz were very clear in saying that, you know, you have the ability to put the building within the, you know, compliant and it would be placed closer to Route 6 and that in your opinion, it was superior to put the building on the northern, you know, leg of the property.
Correct.
And again, we really just don't have anything from planning to substantiate whether those claims are, I wouldn't call them not true or true, but just have they considered the, the project? Yeah, the entirety of the project. And that's, it's usually a huge part of the basis of, for what we, we would approve or disapprove of variance. So, you know, before we get too much further, there are a few memos. I may read at least one of them from the DOT because it does concern the traffic study and you may not have seen this.
We, we've seen it, yeah. The only, the only thing I would say with respect to the DOT's comment is, that's not, that's not necessarily relevant to the, the variance request, right? Because regardless of where the, the building is, that study is gonna, gonna occur in front of the planning board during the secret process.
If I'm, if I'm understanding things correctly, I believe the planning board has the right to either approve your plan in its entirety or can put restrictions on it and make you modify it? If, is that my understanding? Am I incorrect in thinking that way?
As, as long as it's, you know, based on, on evidence of the record, sure.
Obviously. And, but we have none of that information right now. We don't know what the planning board is thinking. So for us to, if you were to ask us reasonably to vary the property, we, we don't know what's gonna go forward, what's gonna be approved, what's not. So, so it's kind of unreasonable, I think, for you to be asking us to make a decision.
Well.
Even though you haven't heard from the planning board. The planning board is really the lead agency on this. They gotta give you, gotta give us the feedback that we need.
It's not, it's not just a matter of having heard from the planning board. They, they've taken us off the agenda and haven't allowed us to go forward.
Is there a reason for that?
I, I don't know. And so the, the issue, the issue from us as an applicant and from, from a applicant's standpoint, from a due process perspective, I understand your board is saying, look, we would like to hear from the planning board, so we can't vote on your application. We're saying.
Well, the, like, the planning board hasn't indicated to us that they're waiting for us to render a, a variance before they even allow you on their agenda. Like, I have no idea why they've taken you off the agenda. I don't believe it has anything to do with them waiting for our decision.
Can we find out what's going on with the planning board?
I'll try to.
And, and, and we're gonna say we do what we can with it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let them know.
You know, because if they were, for example, saying, we need to hear from zoning before we can even start negotiating the project, that would be very different than how they've handled every other project that I've ever seen. So I don't believe, and they haven't sent a memo to the effect, that they're waiting for us. And I'm not sure what, then the advantage to you for us to call a vote right now would be absent, you know, the planning board's plan, your negotiated plan.
I, I.
I don't understand the advantage to you.
It's, it's not a matter of advantage, it's a matter of, of procedural rights. This is an applicant that's standing before your board that's saying, look, we've applied, we've paid the, paid the fees, we've, we've, you know, submitted the materials, et cetera, seeking a determination on a variance. Your board has said in its discretion, we want to hear from the planning board. Whether or not that's from, from a procedural perspective, we'll, we'll reserve all rights on whether or not that's procedurally appropriate. That's what you're saying now. We're now before you to say, we tried. We, we, we asked to get on the, on the agenda, they haven't put us on the agenda. And so procedurally, we are at a position where the record is, from a legal perspective with respect to the variance, complete. And so you are procedurally ripe, in a ripe procedural position to vote. That's, that's.
That's not wrong, but it doesn't, I mean, I think it limits your, your options on the property, so to speak. If we were to, obviously, if we granted the, the variance, it doesn't limit anything. But if we were to deny it, and then what happens if the planning board says, oh, well, this would have been better? Then you don't have that ability anymore.
We don't, we don't have that ability if, if this board doesn't issue, issue the variances, right? So, so at the end of the day, the, the buck does stop here. I, I, if, if the board.
I don't agree with that at all. I really don't.
That is true, but.
I don't agree with that.
If, if.
We do issue the variances, however, we greatly consider the planning board's input, you know.
If, if that's, that's the issue.
I think in this instance, it's required that they have their input in it. Our, our discretionary point of whether it's 100 feet or 200 feet, we don't have enough information to say whether that's actually viable or not. And, and I know there are numerous questions that are being asked. I can't tell you what the planning board should or shouldn't do, but I'm pretty sure they're gonna be very interested in your project. And I'd like their input before I make my decision. That's honest.
I, I respect that, I'm not, I've.
Another point too, we usually get referrals from the planning board. We haven't gotten one, which is a little unusual here.
No, no, this is a, this is a, this is a appeal from a denial application because, because of the referral in the first instance. Procedurally, procedurally, this is, it's ripe for a decision. I, I, if this board is saying they're not gonna make a decision until we hear from the planning board, so be it.
Right now, whether, I wanna do a few more things here with the.
Okay.
You know, we have the, the memo from the DOT and I won't read the memo, but it basically is asking for some more information in the traffic study that you will provide. And before I read, there's, there's some other memos that were read in last time, so I'm not gonna repeat them, Town of Somers and their opinions and things like that. There's a few more public comments, memos that I will summarize. But before I do that, is there anyone from the audience that has any, would like to come up and speak about this?
I just heard about this project that just.
Come up to the podium and, uh. Yeah.
I've lived here 20 years, this is the first time I've heard about a recycling center.
So please state your name for the record.
John Delvecchio? Okay, okay. So this is the first I'm hearing of this, actually just saw a post on Facebook regarding this. Zoning, obviously, is an issue that has to be dealt with, but as far as placing a recycling center in a, surrounded by neighborhoods, I don't think it's appropriate to even consider granting that.
It's really not an issue before.
I understand that.
It was, it was the town hall that said, yeah, that's a good spot for that. So now we're dealing with that issue. We can't say, no, you can't be there.
Has this been approved already at this point? No.
Let me summarize, for people who weren't at the last meeting or don't.
I was out of town.
Fully understand, it's fine. The applicant owns a parcel in a light industrial district in this town. So they have a right to place a recycling center on that parcel. Alright, so there's no denying, there's no ability for us to deny that, that right. Now, what they are asking is to place the buildings in such a way that they require a variance. The parcel is kind of like L-shaped, I would call it. And they would like to place the buildings, so the lower part of that diagram is Route 6 and the upper part is still part of Route 6, but it's set back off Route 6.
Okay.
Now, what they claimed last month was that they can build this entire project and be compliant to zoning, but that the building itself would be moved much closer to Route 6 and be basically on Route 6. Whereas today, this proposal has it set back off of Route 6 based on the, the shape of that property. So that's really just what was discussed and testified to at the last meeting. So just with your comment that you don't want it, you know, you don't agree that.
Doesn't sound right.
Yeah.
And the eagerness, where's the eagerness? Is it, they're gonna be entering out to Route 6 or behind Route 6?
It's on Navajo Street.
Now, now, like across from Fire, you know where Firegol was? Like right across from Firegol.
So it's right, they come in on Navajo, there's a, a waste station and then the recycling activities take place, you know, up.
Up here.
Understood.
Versus moving the actual recycling activities closer to Route 6. Again, this is what, what was discussed at the last meeting. I'm not giving an opinion or anything like that here. I'm just saying, this is where we're at today.
Fair enough.
So when you said, you know, it doesn't belong in a residential area, but the zoning permits this use in that, on that parcel.
Is that different than commercial use? Is that like an industrial use type?
Yeah, it's a commercial zone right there.
It's an industrial.
It's a light industrial.
Okay. I'll speak directly to the town about it, huh?
Yes.
Thank you.
John Camerano of 74 Jennifer Court. I would be probably 1,400 feet away from there. I just purchased my house about two and a half years ago. I have a three-year-old and a baby on the way. I would not, obviously, no one wants to raise a kid next to a recycling center.
Why not?
Pretty good point. Regarding zoning, yes, I did see in the zoning that a recycling center can be put there, but section 300-9, decimation of dust, smoke, gas, or fumes, odor, very important there, odor. I live right near there, odor would, I would smell it. I don't wanna smell a recycling center. Noise, clearly, there's going to be a ton of noise. Vibration, they're gonna be dropping things. I'm gonna feel that vibration every time they drop it. Excessive light and boundaries beyond a lot. Menace by reason of fire, no. Harmful discharge of waste material. Who is watching them?
Well, the DEP regulates their activities.
DEC.
DEC, yes. How do they clean up their facility? Do they hose it down? Is it getting into our, that's getting, gonna get, get into our water supply, clearly? And there's a stream right there.
We talked about this, at the last meeting, we talked about this. We had this very topic and we were talking about that. And they did explain their processes to how they were going to handle it. Theoretically, it sounds compliant, but, you know, we did have those concerns as well. But again, these issues.
Some things.
Need to be addressed through the planning board because I'm sure they're gonna ask the same questions. And again, those questions that you're asking, we don't have the ability to say, yes, you can do it, no, you can't. In this instance, we're not, you know, it's not, it's not in our, it's not in our court.
Section 300-94, Part 2. It will be dangerous to the comfort, peace, enjoyment, health, or safety of the community budding the areas or tend it to a disturbance or annoyance. I'm already annoyed. It's not even built, I'm annoyed. It'll, it will not be in harmony with the general purpose of this chapter in harmony of, well, that doesn't matter. Let's go down to the, uh, construction debris. We don't know exactly, and anybody that's been in construction, you don't know exactly what you're throwing out. Could be hazardous waste in there. It could be breaking that apart and the dust goes up in the air. I know it's an indoor facility, but how are they exhausting that indoor air? Is it hyperventilating? Does it have any filtration on the exhaust? And who is going to keep them in line? That's a major point. What else do we have? Uh, the traffic study. I did read through the entirety of the traffic study. Now that traffic study looks like it's on the best-case scenario. If it's the worst-case scenario, then we would have a very big issue. I believe it was 24 trucks entering from 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock and then 24 trucks also leaving later in the day. Those 24 trucks, that's the maximum load possible? That's best-case scenario. Worst-case scenario was four-ton trucks come in and out more often and then there's a line down the block.
So we were, we were told 6200 trucks would be coming in. So the 24 number is.
That was on the traffic study. The traffic study seems to be.
Yeah.
Alright, so maybe, maybe we're gonna need to address those because I, I read the same thing.
Respectfully, that, that's not fair because you, you gotta read the traffic study. You're talking, you're talking about total, he's talking about peak hour.
Okay, fair enough, 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 fair enough.
To argue that, it does not say, it says peak hour, but. To argue that, it does not say, it says peak hour, but if we're doing 800 tons per day, that's not peak hour, peak hour, that means there'd be traffic down the block.
So let me just make a comment about what you're saying. The one thing that you have to realize is, let's say the applicant puts the building in compliance to zoning, then we're done here, then it's there, they have the right, and they're managed and monitored by the DEC. That's it. So whatever the DEC says they can do, that's what they can do.
A slap on the wrist and a fine when other people are losing money and losing health.
If we were to hypothetically grant a variance, we could condition that variance to say, this is how many, this is the hours of operation.
Yes.
This is how many trucks.
We want to regulate it a lot stronger.
So we, we don't have the ability to put any conditions on a non-variance, but we do have the ability to, so, given what I'm saying, given where I live and so, where you live, I'm sorry, the unregulated as of right versus a conditioned variance is really what I'd like your opinion about. You know, for where you live, it's the northern, you know-
Obviously, the variance seems to be a better option, the clear option for the residents that are surrounding the southern area. But then, if we don't grant the variance, I believe the public board would happily deny them.
Don't know.
What's the benefit of this?
Go ahead.
Who's benefiting besides ATRAC? It's not benefiting our community in any way. Are we getting tax dollars? We can rezone out to some better plans.
Well, recycling has to be done somewhere, so overall, overall, this is, overall in society, recycling is a benefit, because it's better than throwing everything into landfills.
Agree.
Bear that in mind. Of course, if nobody wants a recycling plant in a neighborhood.
Exactly. No one wants a recycling plant in their neighborhood, in a surrounding residential district. So I don't see a benefit to the community here. And then that's my closing statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name for the record, please.
Yes, good afternoon, I'm Howard Gould, I've been in Yorktown for 19, 90 years. Like I said before, I moved here from Brooklyn, and the thing that brought me here, first of all, I got married, got divorced, and one of the things I love about it is the fresh air, the birds, wonderful neighbors. Yes, I think recycling is good. I was just very surprised the recycling is so close to residents, but wrong place, wrong time, wrong area. You dropped something. Okay. Talk about mistakes, mistakes can happen. Recently, in the news, it was on, I think, Channel 12 or Channel 4, and I'm not saying it's going to happen, so don't hold me to this, sorry, I'm supposed to face you. New Jersey, have you heard the news what happened in New Jersey to one of the recycling places, and I'm not saying it's going to happen to you. They found a dead body in the recycling bin, just saying-
At least it wasn't Jimmy Hoffa.
Right, yes. I'm just saying, you never know what could fall into these recycling bins. And recently, within a couple of years, I think maybe the late Tom Diana, who I respect very much, there was a sinkhole recently in Yorktown, which I'm sure you're all aware of it, what had happened, by a baseball field, you can remind me, that you can talk about, maybe. Who's to say all this weight will not cause that near residential homes? I would be concerned, I'm concerned about that. What I would like to see is, like they used to do on the Brady Bunch, I'm just simplifying it for myself, of course. Mike Brady used to have a model of the, of what they're going to build, I would like to see personally the size of the truck, like a toy truck, with a toy car, with toy motorcycles, with ATVs, and see personally what it would look like on a set. So I could see how, and maybe a little traffic, because listen, Yorktown, even though we're not educated experts on traffic, we drive these roads 24/7. And if I say that makes us experts, and considering we are losing doctors, not losing, but a lot of them are retiring, Yorktown, it is going to be a real hassle, and I call it a maze or a Rubik's Cube, to try to maneuver around to get to the hospital, which is a great hospital. Like I said, what about Route 202? Now, my main question tonight is, are there any future plans that Yorktown should know about? Because I know there's either A or B, and I'm simplifying it to make it easier for myself to understand, where this recyclable center is going to be placed. Are there any towns that Yorktown should know about that is going to be sold, or is sold, that another recycling center or solar center is going to be, that Yorktown doesn't already know about, that we should be made aware about tonight, that you can tell us about, so we can be prepared for that? Or is it, or we just don't know?
I don't have anything other than the agenda that we-
So is it possible we could be surprised it'll pop up on the other side of Jefferson Village or Jefferson Woods Apartments all of a sudden? Is that a possible? No, I'm not trying to pressure anybody, I'm just curious, you know, it's good to know these things. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. I'm just, I just want to know what future Yorktown is.
Particular use that we're talking about.
Yeah, I know, we're sticking with what we're talking about now, I'm just-
Particular use that we're talking about that's presently in the zoning.
Okay.
Is permitted in the light industrial-
No, I understand, I understand that.
There are two areas that I'm aware of in the town of Yorktown where this particular use is permitted. One is an area on Front Street, and the other area is on Navajo Road, which is part of-
Okay, no, no, I wasn't, I'm not debating, I'm just-
There is, there is no other application for any board that we're aware of that has to do with the recycling.
Okay, so let me ask this question. Is there anything as far as zoning can do, as far as the roads, I know there are state roads, and that's up to the state, but there are roads that are considered Yorktown roads, which are the, are not, are the ones that are not numbered. Is, what can be done about those roads, because what can the community do? Those roads in terms of what? Widening them, I know we can't afford to build-
That obviously is not something within the purview of the board that you're in front of.
Okay, what board would be?
That would be the town board.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions, and like I said, I'm learning. Okay, I'm not, I'm not debating.
And we all are.
Right, so please don't take this as a debate, it's not.
And another way to stay sharp, another way to stay sharp is get on the website, look what comes before the town, what their agendas are going to be.
Right, okay, no, no, thank you.
Same with the planning board, and they do televise it, you know, so you can definitely watch meetings, but you'll know more about it.
That, that personally speaking, I do agree with recycling things, I don't want to see stuff in the water, I don't want to see stuff on the ground or buried, because I know all about recycling, as far as that goes. Just that, this is all new, and it's so close, I mean, question, okay, one more, sorry.
All right.
If there was a restaurant, would this area have been approved for recycling? I'm just curious, if there was like a restaurant 100 feet, would that have, like-
I don't know. I honestly don't know the answer to that.
I mean, we don't know why the town board in whatever year it was done-
Would that be a question for the town board then?
Whenever they set this zone, you know, we don't know why, we don't have the history.
Okay, I was just curious, but thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate that.
Have a nice night.
Good evening, Jacobs, and just for the information of the board, there is a moratorium piece of legislation now before the town board that's been sent out for referral to the committees, thank you.
When did that happen? When did, when did they do the referral?
I just looked it up, it said the end of August.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, truth be told, it's going to be a, there is a public hearing on the 17th for revision to the zone.
Of this month, of September.
Good evening, board. I'm Michael Kiernan to Brianna Lane. Just once again voicing my opinion that all of us deserve to have, there it is, that's me, the 200-foot variance. If you got the letter, you know what it is.
I won't read the memo, I won't read your letter, but Michael has also provided a letter for the record, basically in opposition to the project, you know, for similar reasons that most of the public comments, but-
Sure, but, but also stating that, you know, if a variance, variance need not be given, right? They have, they have the option. The applicant bought a parcel, the applicant should have done due diligence, the applicant should have known that a third of the property is affected by wetlands, and then taking the 200-foot variance across the adjoining residential takes away another significant, probably about like 10 acres. So that's for them to deal with, they should build in compliance if they're approved at all. Thanks.
You're welcome. So we have, of course, come on up.
Good evening, members of the board, John Ryan Selick, Yorktown Heights. You seem to be wanting more information from the planning board. This is public knowledge, if I may, I'd like to read it to you from the Northern Westchester Examiner. Planning board member William La Scala said he would recommend the variance not to be granted since ATRAC's owner knew the zoning restrictions on the property when it was purchased. You have your answer from one member of the planning board. If I may continue, the planning board chairman, Richard Vaughn, said the site presented many challenges. Quote, "To me, it looks like you're kind of pushing a lot into a property that might not be accommodating to what the development is and what they're looking for," Vaughn said. "The more we dig into this, the more questions we have. Maybe it's too big, the building, maybe it has to be scaled down, maybe there's too much going on, I don't know." The planning board will continue its review of the project. Thank you.
Good evening, Brian Selick, I live in Jefferson Village, Yorktown Heights, New York. I'm going to just stick to the issues that you're working on this evening, and that is the 200-foot setback versus 101 feet that they want. There's a reason for the 200 feet, previously, they have said it'll never be developed, how do they know what the future holds? 200 feet is what Yorktown requires, they knew that, they should either redesign the building, make it smaller, or move it. There's no reason to grant them a variance for 101 feet versus 200. The other thing is the traffic, everybody's talked about it, nobody's mentioned how many employees there'll be that will also add to the traffic. This is another thing to look at, and I think that a whole comprehensive study should be done by the town board, paid for by all the developers and all the buildings going in, chipping in together, because we have Mohegan Lake, 144 units, we have another one on Catherine Street, we have another 185 at least by Trump's, not counting the trucks, not counting the 257, all of these are going to be coming up and down Route 6, and they all have to be taken into consideration for the traffic, not just the one area. Thank you.
So we have a few other letters. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Hello again, I'll give my name, Howard Gould. My question is, are these trucks, I would ask them, but I know I've got to face, I mean, the lawyer, and I'll ask you for them. Are these trucks New York inspected? Because I noticed that there are cars that come in from like, since, like, you know, the tri-state, and I know New York has one of the most strictest laws of, you know, when they inspect cars or trucks, but those who come in from other states, you can tell that the exhaust comes out, and, but diesel anyway gives off bad odors, sometimes you have a drive and you put on your vent, you've got to put on your vent because it just is very heavy. I'd like answers to those questions, please, because that could be, and you can have all those trucks congregate, it's just too big.
I don't know specifically, but what was testified-
Because that, I would think that would be somehow related to what we're talking about.
Because the trucks would be part of their, their existing towns, so the company has contracts in Putnam Valley, so forth, and they would be coming with the recycling.
So that would be part of New York, then?
But the, the construction debris, anybody could come, like, it's open to the public, you could rip sheet rock down in your house and go over there and use the service. So I'm just answering what was testified to last time, and if he gets up, he may clarify it a little more.
Well, my concern is the inspection, it's a New York inspection, well, that's what I'm asking, but if you can ask them.
There is a US constitutional question, interstate commerce, only regulated to some extent.
Right.
So what you're saying is that they can't come in unless they-
No, I'm not saying they can't come in, I'm just wondering how much pollution, if any, is going to be given off by the trucks, are they going to respect the New York laws? Like, if something goes wrong and some, they notice some diesel, like, sometimes the school buses before they changed, or the regular buses, the Beeline, they used to come out and you would see smoke coming out, or maybe even some trucks, I don't know if you ever noticed, some trucks, you see the smoke coming out of it. I'm not saying these trucks are going to do it, I'm just saying, I'm wondering, so-
Well, that's a separate issue.
I know it's a separate issue, but it still relates, I'm still focused, I'm just giving you an example, because that's the best way I can explain. I'm not saying those trucks, I'm talking about the trucks from the recyclable, and I don't know how to-
It could be any truck on the road.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
An excessive polluter in violation of the law, and the law should be enforced.
So who would complain, and who would people complain to about it? I mean, would you call the police, would you call someone from the owner, I mean?
Well, your first call should be to the police, and they would, you know, start any-
I mean, I don't want to be a troublemaker, but I'm just saying.
It's legitimate reason.
Anyway, I'm going to shut up. Have a good night, everybody, so.
Hi, I'm Charlie O'Neil, the president of Jefferson Village. I'm concerned about the storm water that's going to come out of there, and where's it going to filter down through? If it's going to filter down through Osceola Lake, it ends up in Jefferson Village, so it's going to be a problem for us, because we've been flooded out a couple of times already with the storm water. So my concern is, where are they going to dump the storm water into what facility? And Osceola's the biggest, probably, lake in the area that it can go into. And then it's going to end up in Jefferson Village, and we're going to have it back up again. We've complained to the state a couple of times that when Osceola is out, it goes across 6 into Baganoff's Pond, and then it goes heading down south. But when it gets into Baganoff's Pond, it gets backed up, because the water from Osceola is more powerful than the water from Jefferson Village. So Jefferson Village water, storm water, which is the town's storm water again, because it comes from the cul-de-sacs around Jefferson Village, filters through there. So my problem is, or Jefferson Village's problem is, the storm water, where is it going to go? I'd like to know the answer to that, and if it's going into Osceola, it really can't. It's, I mean, at some point, Osceola is as full as it is, and it's not draining properly. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, okay. Last one, man, last one, come on, fellas. This is the last one.
Don't call me names, please, that's really out of place and very inconsiderate. Read my shirt, please. My question is, what's going to happen with the trees? Are they going to recycle it? That's all I'm saying.
Fair enough.
So we have a couple of other letters to our board. So, we have a couple of other letters to our board from public. One from Gents Bukage. I won't read the whole letter in the interest of time, but it's in opposition for some of the same reasons that have been testified to tonight and last month. One from Ralph Anderson, seventy-one Gay Ridge Court. Again, this will be part of the record, but it's another letter in, in opposition to what he calls as a lithium recycling facility, although I don't know if that's the case or not. So, a lot was brought up, I'll give the applicant.
Will you guys be handling lithium?
No, no, no. I mean, look, and I'm sure, let me just go kind of talk about the scope here again. The question before this board is, is the building located a hundred and one feet or two hundred feet from residential district? That, that's it.
Understood.
And, and the only thing I would say that was brought up with respect to that issue, with respect to due diligence is, remember, your building inspector, the town building inspector opined that a hundred foot setback would apply here. Yes, it was, it was, your board was asked for interpretation and you interpreted differently. But the question was, well, on day one, when the applicant was looking and doing its due diligence, the building inspector also agreed. So, it's not as if, oh, well, you knew this was going to.
Yeah, I understand.
I think that ship of sale, I think we addressed that the last.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whether this was a self-created hardship and basically you're arguing that it wasn't because they had the determination of two hundred feet was acceptable.
Got me, right.
Or one hundred feet was acceptable.
The, the other, the other issues with respect to regulatory oversight, noise, the only thing I would say is, and this isn't part of your analysis because whether it's up the hill or down the hill, that's still somebody else's jurisdiction. If you think you guys are going to be tough on, on, on ATRAC, you should see the DEC. The DEC is really the primary regulator of these types of uses. And they've just updated their regulations. The DEC has to have a desk at this site, right? The applicant will have to provide a desk for the DEC because they perform spot inspections whenever they want to. They also have to report back every single week, take track of every single, of every single truck that comes in, what's in it, what was, what was there. And if anything is in there that's not supposed to be recycled, that's all, that's all regulated. It's not as if this is just going to be a free-for-all.
Right.
But I, I, I say that only because, because, you know, it's easy to get up at the microphone and say all these things, and then it's not responded. Putting all that aside, what's before the board is the request for the variances. We do respectfully request that the board vote on, on those variances. We understand your saying, we want to hear from the planning board, we would respectfully object. But at this point, we ask, close the public hearing and, and vote on, on the request.
Okay, so, I guess we have a couple of options.
Do you have one more, you have a comment to make?
I have a comment.
Come on up, come on up.
I know this was zoned for light industrial use, but how long ago was that zoned at?
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, okay. As far as changing the zoning to residential on new construction, that's always done, is that something the zoning board handles? Or is that something the town?
The town board does.
The town board will handle it, because I know that happens all the time.
Yes, town board handles that.
Thank you.
So, I think our options here are to attempt to close the hearing and.
Close and reserve?
Potentially.
No.
But I think many of the comments even raised by the public, even the newspaper comments that were, were read in, describe the planning board's process, which is to do a very detailed analysis of any project, including stormwater, including environmental reviews, including reviewing the traffic studies in detail. You know, we, there, there may be a slight confusion in the sense that we grant the variance, but the planning board is who approves the project. And I guess my concern is that we're stepping forward and approving some part of the project or even disapproving some part of the project before the planning board's really done it, done its process. And I don't really want, you know, I, I don't see the benefit to anybody in doing that, really. To, to the town, to the applicant, I don't see the benefit of us forcing a decision before the planning board has given any substantial input to the nature of this project.
I'd like to supplement that, too. Reading from a July twenty-five, twenty twenty-four memo from, to the zoning board from the planning board. The conclusion was, therefore, the planning board, without reaching a stage in the planning process that would afford in its data and knowledge to put forward a site layout that is most appropriate for the site and least impactful to the surrounding neighborhoods and Yorktown at large, the planning board cannot make an informal recommendation as it refers to the instant application for setback variances. As is the custom in practice, the planning board will refer to make these recommendations to the zoning board of any required variance, once it has certainty that it's designed an effective and supportable site plan and the required variance clearly support those plans. I don't think this issue is ripe for making a decision at this time.
Absolutely, I agree. I was, I said, I started prefaced my meeting by saying that.
So, you know, our options are to adjourn it, to get that input, which is more of our typical process. Now, that limits us, our board, a lot, though, I would say.
What we should.
In that, let's say the, the planning board does come up with a plan and the applicant is agreeable to it. What if we're not agreeable to it? We are then, you know, doing a great disservice to the applicant. So, that's one kind of side of the argument to say, you know, we're more or less going to be forced to do what the planning board says.
At this juncture, I think there's too many questions that haven't been resolved. We know that there's going to be some consideration of changing regulation to begin with. That we don't know where that's going. We don't know if there's going to be changes in any of these.
And that truly is the issue. We don't know what the conformity, whether they're going to, whether they're going to buy this whole package as it's presented and not make any changes or require any changes. So, I agree.
Let me finish.
I know, I'm on, I'm on a whoop head, so. Let me, let me calm down.
Okay. I guess what I'm going to say is that I agree with Bob in terms of what he's saying. I think it's a little premature for us to, to close and reserve because that puts us in a position of necessarily having to make a decision that we may or may not be correct as time goes on. So, with that, with that, with that, with that in mind, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we presently adjourn the meeting.
Can I just say something? So, my name is Juan.
Say your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Juan Rusia, I live in Jefferson Valley, East Main Street. And here I have, like, about fifty more units out of, like, the, over a thousand that we got for the petition against it. And I just want to say that nobody knew about this or agreed with any of it. Like, nobody wants this to really go on.
Well, I mean, I mean, obviously, what, this has been a public hearing for a couple of months now, so you can't really say that nobody doesn't know.
No, no, I know, because most people aren't, you know.
But I guess what I'm saying is that this juncture, what we're, what we're going to do, I think, is hopefully make a decision in terms of how we go forward.
Yeah.
My motion is presently to adjourn the meeting until we get further information from not only the planning board, but also the town board in terms of where we're going with this.
Okay.
So, at the end of the day, that's my motion, I want to adjourn the meeting for this month. I don't think the applicant necessarily has to show up every month until we get a, until we get some more information from the two boards that I just mentioned. But certainly, we'll keep it on the agenda, on the adjourned agenda, until we get more information and we get more solid evidence as to how this project is going to continue.
So, Bill made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Just one more.
All in favor?
Hi.
Matters adjourned.
Matters are.
Matters adjourned.
Can't ask questions, all right, cool, thank you.
Why would you?
No, I just want to know what kind of information would you need to, to, you know.
Okay, your best, the best advice I could give you right now? Stay tuned to the planning board, stay tuned to the town board. We are very limited as to what we can do. All they're asking for is a hundred feet or two hundred feet, not about the right or efficacy of them being able to have that over there. I believe that's your concern?
Yes.
You need to go to the planning board and understand, pay attention on the meetings as to what they're talking about. If you want to voice your opinion as to why you're opposed, that's the arena where you want to do it. And at the town board, we can't do it, we have no authority.
There is, there is a public notice that was just published in the paper. Right here on the seventeenth, the town board is going to take up a matter revolving around whether or not this particular section of the zoning ordinance should be modified or removed.
Okay.
So, on October seventeenth, seven o'clock, be here.
Okay.
September.
October seventeen, September seventeen.
September seventeen.
Excuse me.
Of this year.
Of this year.
So, the motion to adjourn has been carried. Okay. We're now at the public hearings that are new for tonight. First one is Davis, anyone here on Davis? Come on up.
Okay, what is this one for?
It's a renewal, but just here.
All right, we've got, I gotta pull the file.
Yeah, it's a renewal of an accessory, but, and.
I'll put this guy in the back.
Good evening, okay.
My name is Fran Davis, I own with my husband the property at ninety Timberlane Court. And we've been renewing our accessory apartment permit.
So, there's been no changes since, yes?
No, no changes for the last twenty-something years.
So, this is more of an administrative matter, this is a renewal of a special use permit.
Gentlemen.
There is a memo from the building department, basically stating that there's no objections. Let me just double check that. I shouldn't flip through every page because I have the red tag that Ms. Reed awesomely puts on here. Assistant Building Inspector Richard Falcone inspected the property on September eleventh and found no violations, no objections to granting the renewal. And that's a memo from Steve Freyetta dated September twelve. So, given that memo, I make a motion that we grant the special use permit for the accessory apartment at ninety Timberlane Court for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Granted.
Thank you very much.
Alvord.
Alvord, five ninety-five Madison, come on up. Let's say what this is for. It's an application to construct a new garage over an existing footprint of a garage with a side yard setback of three point six feet, where fifteen is required. So, can you state your name for the record and what we're doing here?
My name is Philip Pandolfo, and we're looking to tear down the old garage and build a new garage.
But there is an existing garage, correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought. And it's going, it's going essentially in the same location?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to be a little bigger, but the.
Figure how?
One foot wider towards the house.
Okay, two stories higher.
About four feet back further.
Back further.
Yeah, but the, the distance from the border of the property remains the same.
Okay, and how long do you think that garage has been there? Existing, or do you, do you have any idea?
No, the house was built in the thirties, so.
House was built in the thirties, okay.
I imagine it was.
And how long have you owned it?
I'm not the owner, I live there, my girlfriend owns it.
Okay, all right.
And she's been there since ninety-three.
So, what goes in the, so it's being raised higher, is that a full, like, floor, or is it just like?
No, no, it's to clear car lifts, putting lifts in, so they need a ten-foot wall minimum. And we went with eleven just for safety.
Okay, so, the height of the building is, I can't see it on the plan.
It's under fifteen.
From what to what?
It's like fourteen, something, fourteen, ten.
Fourteen and change.
Fourteen now.
So, what are you going to?
Kept it under fifteen so that we didn't have to attach it.
It's still accessory.
What are you putting on the lifts?
Uh, sports cars.
Nice.
Do those belong to your girlfriend, too, or those are your?
Uh, two of them are hers, two of them are mine, and I'm putting my two motorcycles in there as well.
You got the Van Caves sectioned off, you know?
Well, I've already told her it's my garage, so she can't put her junk in there, just the cars.
So, any members of the audience have any comments on this application? So, we did a site visit, well, we weren't together, but I know all of us went there separately. It's hard to say that there's a major negative impact to the neighborhood on this. I did see a sim, I would call it a similar structure across the street with a higher than, you know, a high-peak garage with a window on it, and it looked very similar to what you're proposing, but even closer probably to the street. So, from a character of the neighborhood point of view, I don't see a big impact. I don't know if anyone has any other thoughts on this?
Nope. No, straightforward.
So, I will make a motion to grant the application for the new garage over the existing footprint of garage with a side yard setback of three point six, where fifteen is required, with the stipulation that this applies only to the requested variance and that the project has to be built in substantial conformity to the plans that have been submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's granted.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Cicero, Journey's End Road.
There you go. That's the fence.
Yeah, I'll just read what the application is. This is an application for a variance for a combination of wall and fence with a height of seven point five feet, located along the front property line, where four point five is allowed by the zoning code. So, can you state your name for the record?
Bridget Cicero.
So, I take it this is the existing fence that's on the wall, it's black?
Yeah, same fence, yep.
And you're not, you're not extending it, it's just that section, whether it's existing now, or you're running it further down?
I'm adding some sections on to the other end, basically to block the headlights coming up the hill.
Got you.
So, I have a picture here, it's not exactly the same, but there's like, you know, the fire pile, so it's coming past like the firewood pile?
So, it's going to be separate from, yeah, it'll be coming, one section will be coming right where the firewood is. And then on the other side, there'll be four more.
And that goes, that goes, there's a side door there, or is that the front door?
That's the front door.
That's the front door, so it's going to go, that fence will go along in front of that, you'll have a gate there, or?
No, it'll be to the right side of it.
On the other side. So, there's a big space in it.
It'll be spaced, you'll see the house and then the second section.
So, it's going to match what's already there?
That's correct.
Is that vinyl or wood, that fence?
It's wood.
Okay.
My usual concern is that a fence of this height might impede sightlines from the roadway, but this is not going to be the case here.
That's correct.
It'll impede her sightline.
But I won't.
So, we have a memo from the building department, and memo dated September ninth from Steve Freyetta. Applicant requesting this variance, he's inspected the property and has no objection, objections to granting the relief. So, again, in looking at the project, it might seem a little high. However, in that neighborhood, there are many, many examples of fences on top of walls. So, I can't really think that this has a major impact on the character of the neighborhood. Does anyone have any other thoughts or comments on this fence?
I don't, I don't think it'll make any difference, I mean, it really, it's a beautiful-looking setup the way you have it.
I think the sightlines issue on some of these, the road will curve and a high fence in the front, you know, you can't see around. I don't see that here at all. So, I'll make a motion to grant the variance for the combination of wall and fence with a height of seven point five feet, located along the front property line, where four point five is allowed per the zoning code, and with the stipulation that this conforms to the plan submitted. And, I mean, this, this conforms to the. And, I mean, this, this conforms to the requested variance and will be built in conformity to the plan submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Granted.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Okay, that wraps up our entire agenda for tonight. Thank everyone for bearing with us. Again, our next meeting is October 24th here in the boardroom. Till then, happy zoning.